Call meeting order at seven o'clock. If you would join me at the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise. My pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the government. I pledge allegiance to the public. One nation under God, indivisible, the public being just and sovereign.
It's hard to see the pledge Brad stood up and the flag was gone.
That's why they call me the citizen at large.
Roll call please.
Gepka?
Here.
Oles?
Here.
Noble?
Yes.
Winchester?
Here.
Stoa?
Here.
Chief Lenz?
Yes.
Agenda approval, Chair would entertain a motion.
You want to add?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I do, I would like to amend the book, the agenda, under new business, I'd like to add be, public comment. I put a paper in front of you, I'd like to add language to the agenda, and the board needs to decide on what language on the time, but I think it'll make it easier for the public to understand their, their responsibility in reference to public comment. So I would entertain a motion to approve it as amended?
Sumoed.
All second.
Motion by Clerk Winchester, motion by trustee Noble? To approve the agenda as amended, adding be, public comment, under new business. Is there any further discussion? None appearing? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Motion carried. Next we go into consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require discussion by the NACFA board and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business. Chair would entertain a motion?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Clerk Jurgenka. Any, oh, no discussion on this, it's consent agenda, so we'll go right to the roll call.
Winchester?
Yes.
Gepka?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Oles?
Yes.
Stoa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Public comment on agenda items only, is there anyone for public comment? Yep. This other motion.
I guess I should say, sorry.
There you go. Good evening. My public comment tonight is on the full-time position proposal that's before you. You'll notice that it is, uh, new business item A. I ask that you listen with an open mind to the chief's proposal tonight. He has put together, I believe, a very good business case to support this, and it's definitely something this department needs going forward. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
General mode lieutenant, North Oak County Fire, echoing what Chief Wilder said in reference to the, uh, credit creation of two full-time spots, um, please strongly consider this. There are days where we have a very difficult time making our schedule and actually managing our deployment, making those spots, open shifts, though. Sorry, that wasn't very articulate of me. Filling those open shifts. Um, the adding of these positions would really enable us to meet our mission, provide the services, and from hiring within, individuals that we've trained, that we've brought up, that have learned, this organization would be highly, highly beneficial to, uh, the citizens and yourselves. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Not appearing, we don't have any presentations, we will go into unfinished business, labor union negotiation update. I can jump on that, we have a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock. That's what I was gonna tell them. Okay. I do know, you know, so we have, we are in the process of negotiations, our next meeting is tomorrow at one o'clock.
Correct.
And we hope to get closer to a, uh, an agreement on the union. Anything that you wanted to add?
Um, no, that's about it until we see what develops tomorrow.
Okay. Under, uh, no action at this point. Unfinished business, articles of incorporation, revisions, and creating board policies. Did, now, everybody have a chance to take those over and look at them? Particularly Brad and Mr. Noble, as the three of us have already worked on before.
Well, as I understand, the, uh, part of the corporation, they were, uh, revised and they were through, I wrote township, Holly Township had some, wanted some changes. I didn't receive any, should we work on that first? Has the change been approved or processed or what? Uh-huh. Oh, I haven't, the mark on mark appeared.
So these were all the original, um, the original changes until it went to, um, Rose Township. And I'll tell you, the part they did not want.
What, what article, what article did, uh, all right, near the township, have objectives that want changed?
Oh, no, that, okay, the, um, on page two. Um, the citizen at large shall not be a current or past employee of NACFA. We, we did agree on that, however, we wanted any, um, in addition, and I did not put that in this, we wanted to, any of the appointed officials to the board to not be a current or past employee of NACFA. So I would like to consider adding that language back in. I think that was it, wasn't that, you know, the, the perk of it?
The last copy that you sent out that was tracking the changes was the version that
Rose.
That came, that the board had come up with, however, Rose did not, um, want, but what you just rattled off, they took that out, so.
I printed the wrong, uh, tonight, so.
There were two things, wasn't it? We didn't want.
Term limits for the citizen at large.
Yeah, on the term limits for the citizen at large, and we wanted, we didn't want somebody that was a past employee that had been discharged.
Or a current employee, or relative of.
Or current, yeah. So there were a couple of issues there. I, I will say, I think the relative of, we have to be careful in our community because we've got so many in this community that are multiple generation and the connections, um, go fairly deep. I, I think if it's an immediate thing, one might be more.
I have no issues with what I was reading, so. The citizen at large can go beyond two years if the board desires.
Yeah, but you have, you have, all we're seeing is this document, you, you want to amend this document, so he made the statement that any appointee, any appointee of the township, that, in any, any elected official appointee of the township should not be affiliated to NACFA.
Correct.
That's the only other item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that should have been in the one you received last month, is that correct?
I, I didn't receive it in the last month.
Yeah, I think you have it in your hand.
No, it's all in my old files.
Oh, okay.
No, I did not obtain it.
Is that the old file?
I cast it out.
Well, I got, I got, I got a attachment from the last EVA term, no, right here, dated November twenty, twelve, twenty twenty.
I thought I cast it out last time.
Got other documents that are, a lot of these documents are draft, the draft is never dated, so we're gonna go here, division is.
So, so the one that went to the board, just to be clear for, um, Brad, there are several changes throughout there that we both agree on, the Holly Township turned it down because of the two things that were left out.
Correct.
So all of those other things that needed to be changed are still a part of that.
Right.
We tried to go back once we had turned it down, and we weren't able to get the other two there, and that was the difference.
So, so the only addition you want to have changed is that the fire authority will not allow an appointed elected, 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 appointed elected official appointed to the township board if they had ties to the NACFA. That the gist of the.
Yes.
Well, I think, uh, the board has no, has no authority, uh, to, to, uh, outline or put any limits on the persons that each, each township board elected official must have quite as authority. That's the responsibility of the, of the individual townships.
Well, that is, if you put it in the Articles of Incorporation, which are ordinance for each township, so that gives you the authority to do that. I think under the circumstances of the situations that have happened in the last three years, um, I think it's advisable, and it was advised by, uh, the NACFA attorney, that, that language being used.
In fact, the fact that the board didn't allow that in a couple of listings is.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm well aware of those. But I don't think, I don't think a, a founding, a founding entity of an authority, that the authority should be dictated, who, the, one of the founding authorities, the qualifications, the people they should be appointing. And that's the responsi, if, if, if one of the founding entities of the authority support, or supports, or appoints elected officials, and then elected by the township represented by township townships, I don't think the authority has any jurisdiction over who they appoint, that's all.
Okay, I agree with you, Glenn.
Uh, I, I don't, I think that's beyond, beyond the scope of the authority.
Okay, and, and I think, I think it needs to be said, that whatever decision we need to make here, it really needs to be a five-nothing vote, because otherwise you're just gonna go back to the townships and reverse them.
Yeah.
You're gonna have one township approved and the other township. So I think, I think the board has to work on this, and, I mean, at some point has to come to an agreement there. Um, I would like to see the term limits for the citizen at large set in place, I think that's important.
I have no problem with what's here. I don't think we have any problem with what's here.
Correct.
With, as what I received here, and, uh, but you bring the other one down, if you send, I mean, we're right back to where we were, it's just going to.
And that's what I just said.
I understand, I'm telling you, I agree with you.
Yeah. Any other opinions on this, I think? Okay. Then we'll be on action taken at this point. I mean, we can make a motion and approve it, but all we do is flip the table the other way.
No, I'm sure, Chairman, I, I think it goes back to the basic fundamentals of setting up a, a setting up an authority or a collaborative group that you're counting on, the founding entities and agencies that, to, to, uh, recommend that they represent this founding agency on the authority. If the founding agency, one of the founding agencies support, supports and likes a position to fill, uh, represents, to fill a position on the authority, and they do a poor job, then let that reflect on them, you know? I mean, disabled could be, maybe in your birth, future, I don't know.
You're right, it could. I, I think one of the problems, when you use the word fundamental, I think one of the problems is, and if you read the letter from Allison Kalsick, I think she said it with, with such finesse, when this board was put together, I don't think anybody in their wildest dreams thought about what would happen if somebody came forward with the intention of tearing things apart, and there were no protections involved in there. That's why for years it functioned with citizen at large having no term limit, it never seemed to be a problem. It became a problem when you got stuck and you couldn't move. The one thing that we have to understand is that Holly Township got put in a position where we were stuck, we had no say, there's no conflict resolution within these, within these papers, you can't go to mediation, there's nothing to make that happen. And what happens is, whatever decision would have been made, whatever that would have cost the department, Holly Township would have been stuck with fifty percent of the bill regardless, because we're a part of that authority. And I think that's something that seriously needs to be looked at. I think as we move forward, it might be a discussion to have with our attorney on that, to see if, if something, the fact that there's no conflict resolution shouldn't be a concern to everybody. This last time Holly Township had their back against the wall, but the next time it'd be the other township. And, and if this authority grows, you could always end up with one of the authority, one of the townships or municipalities with their back against the wall, and at some point in time, there shouldn't be some conflict resolution. Those were the things that we had brought up with the previous attorney, he agreed that those would be healthy for us to adopt those, and, and I think we need to look at them going forward. So it's food for thought, um, we obviously have some differences in opinions. I think with time, as we get back to the business of NACFA and move forward, perhaps we'll have this conversation again, and we'll be able to look at it more fruitfully. If somebody else has a recommendation or suggestion, I'm certainly open to it, as I'm sure the rest of the board is.
Chief? What if instead of applying limitations to the elected official, like you're discussing, what if you went another route, kind of what Mr. Noble was saying, was if you do, board does get a bad apple, if you will. That is obviously shown a consistent history of whatever you want to call manipulation or problems or whatever, that the NACFA board, counted by a majority vote, requested the township remove that person. And I know we can do that right now, but why don't we go one step farther than that, and let's say we allow, we allow that process to happen, but if, what you put into writing into the articles, because again, they are going to be, um, adhere to in the ordinances of each township, that if, in fact, an example like that occurs, and you do get a majority vote from the board that they recommend removing that person, that that township, whoever that person is from, agrees to adhere to that.
Right.
Just a thought. That way, that way you're not stimulating ahead of time who you can and can't put out. But if you do get somebody that's an issue, and again, let the board is, decides that they should be removed because of this, that, and the other, I guess the only added verbiage would be that the townships agree by, you know, supporting us, that they will take action. The action on what the, the NACFA board has suggested.
And that could be part of our conflict resolution, I think we should have, we should move forward with that, no matter what, as with the attorney.
I, I think the problem with this scenario you've created is the fact that you have to have the board vote. In the last situation we had, we literally had one township against the other, and the pivotal person ends up becoming the citizen at large.
I realize that.
And I think that's why, at some point, even in a two-to, two-to-two vote, if the two townships disagree, I think there should be a way that one of those townships, which would be the guy that has no say, can enter into a conflict resolution, because that might have stopped a lot of the problem we had the last time.
And I think we need to take people out of it and do what's right for the authority moving forward with us not being in these positions, I think it's the right thing.
I think what happened could happen anytime and flip. I think the conflict resolution needs to protect the upper guy, regardless of who it is.
Yes.
And I think, and there was, there was no vehicle to do that.
No, but I also think that that particular instance was a unique situation.
It was.
We had this, we had a similar situation happen years ago, with another board member that wasn't appointed, or an elected official that was appointed, and the way that I just suggested is what happened, and that board decided to remove that person from the NACFA board based on the North Oak County Board's request.
Right, and, and I said, and in that respect, it makes sense, the problem is in the last scenario, you're, 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 you never were able to get past the disagreement, and, and the upper guy was just stuck going along for the ride.
You're right.
And so, uh, I think what we probably want to do then is talk to our new attorney and see if.
She can come up with some language.
Yeah, and she may need to meet with both townships to see how that works. Box?
Well, that's fine. I mean, we can explore it.
Yeah. Mr. Noble?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Stoa?
Same notion, I think you should have, be able to get rid of me too. Just as a board itself, there should be language saying, hey, it's because you're here for two years and you're not doing, doing it. The board should, this board should be able to get rid of me.
Right.
Which I don't think that's in there as a right.
It's, yeah, that's a good.
Yeah. I mean, I missed my paycheck and everything, but you know. If it happens, you know. But I, but even as the conflict that you guys had before I got here, you couldn't have gotten rid of the citizen at large by themselves.
Right.
So, so the, where do you go from there? Right, where do you go from there? Do you take that, your complaint to the township, the NACFA board brings the complaint to the township, is that what you're talking about?
Chief?
And trying to persuade the township, say, hey, this is a bad apple, we need to get rid of this person?
So what took place about ten years ago, we, we had a, a board member that was a continuing problem, it was obvious what her agenda was, and the rest of the board saw that, even the board members that were in her own township.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it went on for some time, it was talked about, it was warned, if you will, didn't stop, the board took a vote, wrote a letter to that township indicating process, the history of the situations, suggested that should be replaced, and the township did.
Well, that seems like a fair way of going by, even though it might not happen, but.
But the townships are under no obligation to do that.
Correct.
Right.
This board can ask for it.
But they can say no.
Right. Put up with it.
Exactly.
But as far as me, this board can, of course, you wouldn't have gotten rid of me in that situation that was earlier, so, or whoever's here.
Yeah. Okay, so if I, if I hear very correctly, then I would make a motion to, uh, present to the attorney, um, to create language for conflict resolution, and to define the responsibilities of the citizen at large, including steps for removal.
I think there should be other.
Support.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we've done, we'll call that motion by Winchester with support by Stoa. Is there any further discussion?
What was the last part, and the five responsibilities, citizen at large?
Including steps for removal.
Thank you.
Does that work for you guys? Any further?
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Okay, did you mention the roll call vote, please?
Winchester? Yes. Stoa?
Yes.
Gepka?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Oles?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, we'll go into new business, uh, full-time position proposal. I will beforehand, in our group of chief, I will tell you that we've had conversations about retention, and I know we've got some recruits that are coming out of these graduating classes, it was reported that we had to watch somebody to, I think both Brandon and Oxford, is that correct?
Correct.
I will add that today I was in Oxford, and, uh, Open County Association of Township Supervisors, we meet once a month, supervisors from all the different townships, and Jack Curtis, who is the township supervisor for Oxford, he actually addressed the group, and he said, you know, we're all friends, we all work together, but he said, I think we're all aware of what's going on right now, and we found ourselves in a position where we're poaching from each other, because we need employees and there aren't enough people to go around. And in that conversation, he said, I know we've taken, he said, we put the, we put the job position out there, and they come to us and apply, it's not like we're hanging around your back door, but he said, the job offer's out there, they're coming, and it's very obvious when they get to us by their resume where they're coming from. And part of that conversation was, that he said he would like us as a group, the Open County Association of Township Supervisors, to come up with a way that across this county we could start, um, farming through the schools and putting together a unified effort from the different school districts to be pulling kids out of there, because we've all got the same problem. And I thought it was interesting that he brought that up today, when I knew that this was on the agenda coming forward. So I, I say that because I wanted this board to know, we're not a lone ranger of this situation, it's happening all over. And he said, they get employees, and a couple of the other supervisors talk about, they get new employees, they work for three days and they don't want to do all that work, and they quit. They come in for one or two days hired for, whether it's a DPW, whether it's clerk in the office, whether, and it's happening not just in one township, but everybody's seen it. And so I thought it was interesting that he brought that up, but at this point I'll turn it over to you for your particular proposal, but I wanted to mention that because it's out there, we are aware of it, it's not just here in Holly, it's not just here in NACFA.
Well, to talk about, when you brought up a little bit further, we are a little different in the fact that Oxford is a full-time department.
No, the difference was, they don't need to be poaching from everybody, but they know they are.
But they're poaching because they are full-time. Correct. And they can give full-time wages and benefits to a paid NACFA firefighter that's making, you know, a third of that at our time department.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah, that's, that's your job in life, that's what you want to do, obviously you're gonna go where the money's at, and, so.
But yes, he was correct in, in the statement that everybody's feeling, the whole, the whole career field is, is, uh.
Got experiencing. And, and the people here, for the, for, we're dealing with two townships that have budgets under a million and a half, give or take, we're talking, uh, with, with two communities that have a population of roughly six thousand people, you're comparing it to communities that have thirty-eight thousand people.
I'm not comparing it in that aspect.
No, I didn't mean, but I'm saying, that's what we're comparing with the NACFA firefighters.
But for the individual career firefighter, he don't care what your population is.
No, but I was explaining why it's such a, no, I was explaining why it's such a problem, and, and the challenges that we're up against, because as you said, it doesn't matter what your population is, firefighters are players, and you gotta have people covering the ship.
Well, on that topic, it is, that Oxford, one of those charter townships, and they have, they had more increased, uh, tackling for, and, uh, we, we are townships, we're regular townships, so they, they, and they, and they have bigger, they have a bigger base.
Oh, absolutely.
Let's face it, let's face it, our two townships are pure rural.
Absolutely.
I mean, there's, 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 there's no railgun fit machinery, there's no manufacturing operation or any of the techs here. Anyways, it's side talk.
Okay.
No, and it's, it's a fine line that I have to walk to try to balance what, what we are as a rural community to being able to protect that. And as the years have gone on, especially this last 10 years, we have seen. A huge decrease in retention and hiring. But yet the wages are, are going up. We're losing people to. Full-time departments because of the wages and benefits that they get there as opposed to here. Meanwhile, we're investing, having the new people that we do bring in, the young guys, we invest thousands of dollars over a number of years. To get them all licensed and certified and familiar with all the equipment and the area only to. Go to a full-time department after they have all this knowledge that we've invested enough. We get nothing out of this. We simply lose that person.
We become the training center for everybody else.
So again, it's a balancing act trying to take into consideration what, what we can afford as a small community. But being able to protect there with enough people on staff to cover the stations during the calls. We, we tried to put tactics over the years with doing little incentives, which is a 401K for our paid-on-call people. Which costs us minimal to do, but again, it was something that we thought, well, maybe it'll track people, maybe, maybe it'll keep people. I don't think we found that it's gone either way. Um, we've put on some life insurance policies. We've increased the hourly part-time wage. Um, you know, we, we were kind of the, the frontiers in, in increasing the wages. And now all the surrounding communities have followed and they're up to that, if not more now.
Right.
Um, and he talked about that today too. He said, he said price freeze is illegal or price control, you know, wage control is illegal. But he said, every time this community races or that one, then the next one has to jump for the next one. You know, it's a competitive market out there to try to keep. Problem is we just don't have enough people.
The, the big problem where it's concerned is rural paid-on-call department and rural community is. 20 years ago, volunteerism was huge. I mean, I, I remember when I was the lieutenant at station one and in charge of receiving the applicants for my captain at that station, the old station right here. We would get probably five to 10 a month. We'd have a stack of applications, uh, Chief Wild, who the test of that was not in there and it was constant. I mean, we didn't, because it was, and that was, that was again, paid-on-call. I was making, you know, five bucks an hour back then or whatever it was. Five bucks per call, not even per hour. Um, there, that atmosphere is just not existing anymore. We don't get people banging on the walls and, or banging on the doors, getting in applications to do paid-on-call firefight. Um, we get a few, um, which is why we've had to go outside of our jurisdiction that we cover to hire what we. Call out of district personnel, um, to cover the 12-hour shifts. Um, but even that is diminishing. Um, I believe Captain Seal has a couple of interviews this week with some new candidates, uh, but I believe they're both, um, from out of town. Um, meanwhile, as Mr. Paul has mentioned, last month, we. Lost our guy that had been on the department for four years. He was out of district, but he was a paramedic firefighter who was, you know, working a, a pretty good amount of hours every month for us to fill in. And he got a job at Brandon, Brandon Fire, but worked up a few, few job offers. He put in for one.
Yeah.
Um. It's back to the, the, uh, item at hand here, the information I put in your packet. Uh, there's a couple of graphs showing their turnover rates over the past three years, terminations and fires. Um, and as you can see, since June 30th of 2019, we hired 21 people, but we terminated 22 people. Now termination doesn't mean that I fired them. It just means they left. Um, I can tell you that out of that 22 people, probably only two or three were actually terminated on disciplinary issues. The rest of those people just left because they either got hired onto a full-time department. Or the other big thing we're seeing as of the last five years. The guys that are on here doing part-time stuff or paid-on-call stuff cannot continue to do it with the training requirements that continue to increase. You know, a lot of these guys were young when they started and didn't have families and children. Now they do, so now they, you know, they've got to find time to do that. Plus their regular career, they don't have time to come and work 12 or 24 hours a week here. Oh, and by the way, you need to do 18 hours of medical and fire training a month on top of that to keep your credentials up. Oh, and by the way, uh, we need you to respond to, you know, the big players, the structured players, the mutual link calls that we get from. If, people just don't have time to do that on a paid-on-call basis. So all of that stuff that has come to the head. And over the last five years, that's why we've seen this huge decrease in participation with our type of player department. Um, I've, again, wrestled with this back and forth. Um, we are a small department. Do we need 10 people full-time? Unfortunately, I think we do. If we do not continue to keep up with, you know, replacing a paid-on-call part-time person with a full-time person every once in a while. It's going to come to the point where. I need coming to the board and, and we're so far behind and so lacked in, 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 uh, employees that. You know, it's going to be one of those things where we should have incrementally done it over, you know, three to five years, but we didn't. So now I need. Five full-time people because we're that.
That's it.
Um, last year I, I did propose in one of the budget options, a full-time position. That did not get approved, obviously. So we, we did not add a, a full-time position to the department at that time. Um, so, um, as you see in the, in the packet, I, I did draft a letter up explaining. The necessity, I, I would like the board to consider two positions, um, that we can fill sometime this fiscal year. Um, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying if, if it's approved, I'm going to do it tomorrow. Um, I want to wait for some things to settle out. I want to get this grant that we're waiting for, to give you guys an update on, the $500,000. Um, obviously we have the mileage that's, that's going right now. So again, I just. I, I want the, the board to know what's going on. This is the situation we're facing. Um, we on average have 20 plus shifts a month that begin to be each month that don't get filled. Um, we end up.
What is a full-time firefighter?
How many shifts a month does he work? Nine to 10, um, nine to 10, 24-hour shifts depending on how their schedule rotates. Um, so two full-time positions.
That's two people.
Two, yes. With the addition of two new full-time positions, we can fill approximately, um, nine, on average, nine 24-hour shifts a month with each person.
And, and the cost, because we're already spending money to fill those shifts as on-call.
Yes, because we pay a higher wage to our paid-on-call people. Um, our paid-on-call guys, like a medic firefighter who has engineer level makes, can make $23, and it's $23 an hour. Okay. We're going to pay to fill those hours regardless. So because he's part-time and not full-time, they make a little bit higher wage than what a full-time salary. Full-time person's wages breaks out to over, over the year for their, their hourly. Um, so in the example that I, that I put in there. Using the number of 2,700 hours worked annually, that's, that's what a full-time person's scheduled. Shift hours add up to annually roughly. Not, not taking into consideration their annual leave time, sick time, stuff like that. They're scheduled for roughly $2,700 annually per year. So we're paying from an employer standpoint, we're paying that out regardless. We have, we have the shifts. We have the hours. This is what we're paying. Because we pay a part-time employee a couple of dollars more an hour. When you take the two on the annual basis, we're actually saving over $10,000 in salary. For a full-time, one full-time person versus paying one part-time person. But then you have to consider the benefits, which I laid out there.
So, so one question. What happens when one of our full-time people picks up an extra shift?
Overtime happens.
That's at 10 and a half?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. So that's even worse.
Well, we also pay our part-time guys. Our, we have, we have a handful of part-time people that are young, don't have families. Um, don't really have a primary career job, just to, you know, set right now. They're, they're working 70 hours a week. Sometimes because they're picking up these open shifts. Whoever, whether you're full-time or part-time, once you get a certain threshold, you, we haven't paid overtime. It's, it's law, right? So not only. Or would we be saving money with the wage comparison, we'd be saving the money paying out overtime. Um, and also. Taking into consideration our, our go-getters that we have, we're, let me, and I'll give you an example. We have two, two young men in this department that have been with us for two years. Actually, one's been with us longer. He was in high school still when we bought him on. We brought them through, trained them. They, they are one of, two of the, the most impeccable people that we've had a long time. They're, they know, they know their skills. They, they are here. They participate. Um, they're both in paramedic class right now. They're, they're both EMTs, but they're both in paramedic class right now. They're going to be finished with that class probably in the next three to six months. Once they finish that, they can have their choice of where they want to go because any department would be lucky to have them. If they do that, we lose them. And, and all those benefits that came with them. And I say that because opening this up to get two more slots may give. An opportunity to somebody like that, that we've invested all this in for us to keep them. And stay with the department.
So I think there's that side of it.
I think the fact that you have an average of 20 open shifts monthly. Speeds volumes and knowing what we know about the environment out there. As I've talked with these other townships and I hear what's going on. I. I think it just makes sense.
It does.
Oh, I have a question.
I had some to ask too, if you want to read on it.
The base, uh, my experience has been with, uh, construction inspection, staffing personnel based upon a 40-hour a week. Full-time 52 per year, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, 28 hours.
Yes, sir.
The base, the base payroll, the base payroll, the base man-hours for, for the back salary for the full-time is $2,700 here.
It's 2,652 or something like that?
I, I, I know you go on to shift bases, but I can, I can relate better to Albert's okay. So the base, the base payroll for an employee in the fire authority is $2,700, 27 hours per year. That's what they get paid for.
Correct.
Divide that number into the, into the annual salary they give of the period.
Correct. Okay. So, so let me, let me give it to you in factual stuff. A full-time employee that's not an officer on this department, a firefighter. His hourly wage, when you break it out, is about $18.28, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Compared to a part-time person that we're paying for those same hours at $23.
Yeah, I, I've gone through some, some staffing on two stations, et cetera, et cetera. And I, and whatever analysis I'd used, you know, you're short, you're short for two people. Three, three, five days per year at each station.
Correct.
And that's why, that's why I asked for these questions. Those $27 per year. Um, okay. And I think the difference, and correct me, the difference between the part-time and the full-time. The part-time employee does not get holidays, sick time, vacation time.
Correct.
Or, or full-time dollars.
Correct.
But they do get, they do get the same benefits.
No, they do not. They get a 401.
He said that.
However, it's a lower percentage that they get paid.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lower percentage contribution.
Yeah, but we have, but, but the authority still has the federal, federal payable taxes of unemployment. They fuse up all the other payable taxes.
Yes.
That go along both positions.
Both positions. They mirror one another.
Trying to separate the pieces up. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So it's $27 per year is the, is the base. Anyway, the full-time employee, they work 2,700. They get, they get, they get paid $2,700 per year.
They're only going to work.
Their hourly wage is based off that. Are they going to actually work that much? No, because you have to factor in.
You got.
Their leave time, sick days.
You got, you got almost 9%, 10%.
Correct.
That's salary, the salary goes on, on, on staff. So, okay. That's, that's my question.
And I kind of captured that number in the leave time compensation amount. And the benefits. So when you add all the benefits in, and I, and I'm using an average going off of a young person, because that's usually the type of. New applicant that we get when we are full members. Okay. They're, they're young, they're, you know, the healthcare costs are not as much as a 50-year-old. Um, their, um, leave time compensation is going to be lower because they don't have the years of service accredited to be up to have. You know, 300 hours a year. We're, you know, we're only half that. So, um, when you figure all that in. With the savings of the salaries itself and then add back in the benefits that you would have to add in additional for a full-time person. You're, you're only, you're only spending, you're spending under three, it costs us under $3,000 to hire a full-time person.
Not much at all. We have the stability.
That is, that's the main thing is the stability. That's a good word.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to authorize the chief to add two additional full-time positions.
I would support. I will support.
Motion by Paul is support by Kirk Winchester.
Where is this coming out of the budget at?
I was going to say, it's more discussion.
Sorry.
Off to the races.
Is this, is this, is this already in the budget that we just passed?
It is, well, it is not, not the 3,000. So I can tell you, I did look into, um. A couple of things, expenditures that we have coming to an end this year. Uh, we have a lease agreement. We had a three-year lease agreement. We had our phones all replaced with new phone equipment three years ago. We signed a lease instead of buying it outright. We leased, kind of leased the own thing. Um, that comes to end in three months. That's, um, $4,000 a year right there that we'll be. Having, we're not spending on, on our phone, phone equipment. We don't need to replace it right now. It's, um, working and functioning properly. So. Um, as far as, uh, you know, Riley Peter to pay Paul, that, that's $4,000. Uh, I'm pretty sure I can come up with, with $2,000 or $3,000 in a 2.3 million budget. Um, workspace scenario. Uh, our capital fund gets lightened by a couple of grand at the end of the year, but, um, you know, I try to be quite thrifty throughout the year. Whenever a contract or something else or a renewal or something, I would usually play hell with them, trying to get a lower rate on stuff where. So, um, I don't anticipate any issue coming up with the extra few thousand dollars to do this.
What's the, uh, you're not covering 20 hours a month right now, you said?
Twenty shifts.
Twenty shifts. So this wouldn't help cover that, would cover this?
Not going to cover it totally, but it's going to put about, it's going to take about 98% of the, the product amount.
Okay. What, um. You must have mandates that you're supposed to cover every shift, I assume. Yes or no? I mean, is there, state of Michigan tells you, you have to have a paramedic and a EMS person available all the time?
The way that we're licensed to the state of Michigan to respond ALS, um, we have to have a crew. One crew, one ambulance for ALS immediately with, you know, because like we run seven, seven to eight-minute response times. Have to maintain that in order to do that for staff. But over the years, we've done that here as well as the other stations.
Okay.
Both stations have the same people, the same response time, the same, um, that is what we're struggling with is to have both of those stations. covered with the manpower we're supposed to have it covered with to pull the correct equipment and the rest.
Are two guys enough?
Yes.
For spending money, let's go for three.
No, 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 no.
Well, I, I don't want these people to have, have a heart attack and then have somebody on ship.
So.
That would be my concern as a citizen at large.
Again, we make, um, we make arrangements either by putting people on and we have to pay them overtime uh, by letting the officers or the rest of the, the, uh, boys know, hey, we don't have a second person. There's only one person at the station right now. If we have, we, we still get the response, because this, like, if, if we don't have a second person down at Rose Township Station for a ship.
Yeah.
There's pretty much never a scenario where it's not covered. There's at least one person there.
Yeah.
Um, but one person can't transport patients. You have to have two by law.
Right.
And that's sort of licensure levels to do that. So right now, when that happens, not only does that one go, we get a call, Rose Township, then ambulance is going. It's going with one person. It's got all the equipment on it. The level of care does not suffer. They're still gonna get their, this ambulance is back in immediately. They're, they're going out there, too.
And then you could call from other places, awesome.
And we get a call from others. The problem with that, and it works both ways, is now we've pulled all of our resources
That out.
to that end. And nine times out of ten, five minutes after one call goes out, another call goes out in the opposite direction.
It's always, it's always that.
That's the way it always works.
Well, I guess I just bring that up because of you don't have the, the pool that you used to have, like you said, twenty years ago, ten years ago.
And if I didn't have any integrity, I would say, yeah, give me four, give me five. But I'm trying to, to be a happy medium here. I'm trying to balance.
I guess I'm just trying.
What I feel is right, both on the taxpayer's side, you have the department's side. And at this point, if we can get two people right now, I think we can balance things out for a while, keep up on our recruitment retention program, fill those other spots with some paid-on call people, part-time people, because there's still a handful of them out there. Um, and, you know, run with this for a while and see what, see what tracks. See if it, maybe, maybe we're gonna stop and even out. Maybe we'll start to climb and, and get some extra people back, but maybe we're gonna start to go down again. And at that point, it's my job to let you guys know, hey, we still haven't pulled out of this yet. Um, we may need to think about another down route, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, delay this discussion until the next month, month meeting. Let's see what happens to the millages. Uh, let's see what's gonna happen to the revenues. I'll be, I'll be prepared, I will be prepared to discuss it at the next month's meeting. It's not just.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. You're, you're wanting to table it.
Right, till next month.
For a month.
Vote on the motion.
I was saying, we'll, we'll have to vote on the motion that, that's on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, you know, let's say, you got, you got, you got two issues in the budget. I got, I got none, I just, I, I can sense where you're coming from. Okay, economically, you got two issues. You got the, in, the, the additional expenses coming from the labor negotiations. I don't know what they all are. I don't know, I have nothing about it. I'm sure they're talking about past, past compensation, future compensation. Who knows what's, what's gonna increase in the budget. Right now, the budget for each township is eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars a year. Okay, so you, 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 you got, that, that's what I have to get corrected in the budget. And secondly, uh, let's see what happens with the village. Okay? Let's not get ourselves into a trap where we're, we're fine, okay? That's my only reason for, uh, I'm not, I'm not objecting to the, uh, concept. From the numbers I ran in my other experiences, it, it is, it, it, there's no doubt about it. I think there is some lack of full-time two-man staffing at the station twenty-four-seven. But I'd like to look at the economics. I mean, I ask the latest, the latest update on the next meeting. I'll have to say thank you.
Okay.
It is only six thousand dollars, and you have the stability, which you can't really put a price on. And if the village doesn't pass, there's a way bigger problem than a six-thousand-dollar problem.
I agree. For the six thousand dollars, uh, this should move forward.
All right. No governor?
No.
I'm gonna call for, I'm gonna, I'll call for a little call, please.
Collins?
Yes?
Winchester?
Yes.
Stowell?
Yes.
Gamka?
Uh, yes.
Noble?
No. Motion carries for one. All right. Moving on, we have had public comment on the, um, agenda for the five years I've been here. We've never defined it. We've had to use a lot of public comment in recent months, and it has been some confusion by the residents, um, as to when to speak, when not to speak, or, or agenda, not agenda. I passed out this paper to each of you with my proposed language to define it. I'll read it aloud. Public comment on agenda items only. Message of the public may address board once recognized by the chair. Comments are limited to, and I have a blanket because the board can decide how many minutes. Prior to addressing, the board members of the public will state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comma, comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, anybody has any other recommendations? I just felt that if we put that into our agenda, uh, the public is sitting here today. Does that make it pretty clear for you folks? I'm seeing heads nod, yeah. Okay. Anyone else?
With the exception of previous tyrant.
Well, I'm not going backwards, I'm going forward.
Well, anything you're really changed about is you, you wanna put a minute in there.
Well, we don't have a, a time limit.
We usually have three minutes at the council, and I think that would be applicable under these circumstances.
We can always give more as a board.
Well, and, and I will say, just personally, as a chair, at least as the chair for public function, we've got that three-minute guideline. And if I see somebody up there reading, even if I want to get to the bottom of the page, I don't cut somebody off with a sentence. If somebody's up there and they're speaking out quickly and respectfully, and they're, they're making a valid point, I oftentimes let them go over. Like, it's, it's not that addition, but at the same time, if somebody's just up there raving, raving, it's three minutes and we're done and we move on. Because this is a topic of public comment, I'll take your questions.
Uh, my name is Dan Johnson. I live at eighty-six thirty-five Tipton Trail, Holly, Michigan, Rose Township.
You got the first one, right?
Um, I, I think one of the things that confuses the public a lot of times is when you guys are going through the agenda items. You may discuss something, and it may trigger a question that the public has, but technically, they're not allowed to ask because the last public comment is for non-agenda items. So they're kind of left hanging in limbo, but how do they get their question answered?
Well, the last public comment's, pardon? The last public comment section's for nothing.
No, I, I think his point is, I guess.
I understand which point is, because I hope the stance kind of the same thing. And it's based solely on the fact that this is an township meeting. This is a fire authority meeting. I think it's a different animal. I really would respect more that if we're able to interact with the public, um, when we are talking about something and they have a question, and this, again, this is me, my aspect, my, my perspective, I don't have a problem with somebody raising their hand, as long as it's within, it's a reasonable question, it's not being rude, and they're not trying to interrupt. We're talking about something and somebody's got a question about it, I don't have a problem with them raising their hand and saying, well, could you elaborate, or could you answer this? I will gladly do that. I realize that in a bigger type venue, that can, that can get a little crazy. But I think from what I have witnessed all these years, been sitting in the seat for twenty-seven years, with the amount of people that, that come here and, uh, the questions they have, and, uh, I don't have an issue with, with having an interactive meeting with the general public, as long as it doesn't, you know, start to run over for hours at a time, and.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I understand.
I've been that here, I've done.
And I know we, we do it to some extent, but I, I just need to, to increase.
I know public comments was an issue. When we had our special meeting, uh, that Holly Township called, there were a lot of Rose Township residents that showed up at that meeting. And it was kind of bizarre. I called for public comment and nobody stood up. And I called it a second time and nobody stood up. And we went on with the meeting. And, uh, if you remember Steve Ruth from Holly Township trustee, asked, he said, do, he said, do we have any Rose Township residents here? And I said, I think the majority of them. And the hands went up, and it was the majority of the room. And he said, why didn't anybody make public comment? And I said, we didn't know if we could. So there is a misunderstanding, and that's why I was trying to get something that would help clarify that.
Yeah, you run your meetings much different than Rose Township runs theirs, and that was the confusion.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry about that.
No, no, I would like to make a, I would like to make a comment on, on this, and we've had this, and people have been saying this. In two thousand twelve, I was elected township supervisor, you know, November two thousand twelve, and I heard the same people, people were saying the same thing. And I says, this is a good idea. Let's try this. And because never been elected, it's my first elected job, and I started that in January two thousand thirteen. And at first, things were really good. People would raise their hands, you could call them, and, and it didn't add. And as time went on, over about four, five, six months, this is what happened. You got more and more people. You would have, you would have, this man here would have an opinion, and then this, a person over there would disagree, and this person in there would be in-between, and people started arguing. And after a while, the, uh, the, the meeting lost. I mean, our meetings, we weren't accomplishing anything. So long about June of that, two thousand thirteen, we stopped it. We went back to the, uh, so it's not, it sounds great in concept. I'm all for it. I mean, but what, it says, that started off good, you know, January, February, March. And people told me, I says, you know, I, we're gonna be different here. That's my experience on this.
No, and that's a valid point. And I would, uh, I would say that if it got to that point, then, then yes, you, you gotta roll with changes. Um, but I'm not one to say, because these people did it, or these people didn't allow it, we shouldn't allow it. And I'm saying,
I'm just sharing, I'm just sharing.
The same, based on my experience of the types of board meetings that this board has. A lot of people, it's not your typical township meeting. Um, there's specific questions to be fielded because it is particularly emergency services. It's not your general township stuff where you could go from A to Z on things. It, it's a little bit more pinned down, and I, and I just have always had the open mind and concept of, you got a question, ask it, we'll answer. But if it starts to get out of hand, and like you said, we start to have arguing, and people interrupting, and it comes on circus, well, then, at that point, then you gotta change the, the rules a little bit to, to, to real.
I will say this. I think the responsibility, that falls on the chair.
It does.
I have never been in a meeting that I wasn't able to stop. I did the board of, not the board of review. They had, um, a drain board in Brandon Township. When I first came into the office, and Open County Art Resource asked me if I would be on that board, I served with Gary Walls from Waterford Township, and a, a, a young lady from Rochester, the city of Rochester Hills, the three of us. There were a hundred and sixty people there, and they weren't happy. And it got out of control. And that, this is for, and I used it, and stopped for me again. I stood up and I told them, I said, look, we're here to help you guys. We're either gonna do this in an organized fashion or up through the room. It's that simple. And it changed the whole temperature of the room.
And again, I know that's the way that you govern, because I've seen you.
Yeah.
But that's not how every chairperson governs. We've seen that go stand.
Right.
And I just don't want to, if the board is willing to entertain that we're open and, you know, reflect back on questions and stuff like that during the meeting, fine. I just don't want to set a precedent that we're only doing this, we're only doing it for this many minutes, and, and this is my.
It's just public comment at the beginning is all, not the, it's not the interaction between.
And, and that's.
Yeah.
But that, you're right, this is in reference to the open public comment.
Yeah, you don't necessarily have to, are you saying you don't wanna limit the public comment?
I'm just saying I don't want to start going down the road of, of shrinking.
Well, I actually thought, I'll tell you when I typed that, I thought, I thought it might even be nice if it just said three to five minutes. That's, that's not dropping the, you know, the cutoff.
Sure.
The question is back to, forget your name.
Dan.
Dan. Is, as we're going through the agenda items, we're voting on these things. And he has a question about it that might not occur to this board.
Right.
And he wants to put his two cents in to maybe enlighten us. And it's over time, he gets down to public comment. That's, that's Dan's.
Yep. That's how a, a business meeting usually is conducted.
Yeah.
It's amongst the board, not the board and the public.
Okay.
Not saying that.
Most township residents have actually had to ask the township board to go back and re-vote on an agenda item. Because we had questions that we couldn't get answered until the end of the meeting.
So, so there are two things.
Typically, how a, a government meeting is run.
But we've also been told that township meetings are not for questions.
So there, so, so just for clarification, there, I put public comment on the agenda. I need your language for the opening public comment. If I, if I'm hearing the board correctly, we'd like to also be open during the meeting to take questions in an orderly fashion.
In an orderly fashion, absolutely.
And be chairs discretion. Right, and before we go any further.
Which it is at this point. I don't think we need to change anything because you have that discretion.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be in writing.
No.
Just needs, chair needs to recognize if he wishes.
Right.
Karen, it, one of the.
But I, but I would like the original definition to be on the agenda.
I, yeah.
Before we go any further, I've got a hand over here.
Uh, yes, Denise Nusseris, uh, twenty-one fifty Ranch Road, um, Rose Township. My thought is, just in this conversation, is maybe after an agenda item, there could be an opportunity for us to put our two cents in before a vote is taken, so you know where work's coming from.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we're, what we're. All right.
I think we have a fair chair that will recognize as needed.
So I would like to make a motion that we adopt the language that's in front of you to put on the agenda. Adding three to five minutes in that blank spot.
So you want this exact language put on number five, though?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's why I take it out, just to be clear for everybody.
Okay.
Well, number five and number ten?
Uh, well, no, this addresses number ten.
Yeah.
A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments.
I would support that, but in discussion, I think it's either three minutes or it's five. Three to five is.
Yeah, you might, you might as well go five if you're going five.
Right, so I think we should decide on one number.
I would suggest three, and if, like you say, they're gonna go over a little bit, you let it happen.
That's, I agree with that.
So the motion is to adopt the language for three minutes?
Yes.
Is there support?
I support.
Any further discussion? Not appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, I, you're. That will bring the reports.
Included in your packet was the run counts for June.
Excuse me, Jeff. Is somebody done with that language? I wanna pass it to Pat, so she. All right. I'm sorry, keep, go ahead.
Uh, the run count report was in your agenda packet. I, I had a hundred calls.
The run count report was in your agenda packet, a hundred calls right on the nose for June, sixty medicals, six vehicle lights or eight vehicle accidents. We had some wires and trains down from the storms we had. Mutual aid calls were four medical mutual aids, three fire mutual aids. Encoded in that was the, obviously, the downtown fire in Holly, which we've had meetings in, right? What we did not have to be here to talk about was the week after that, we had another mutual aid structure fire in the city. They burned down a commercial building as well. So, we got our workouts in that, in that seven-day time span there. So, we transported forty-nine patients. Rose Township had thirty-seven total calls, Holly Township had fifty-three, we had three out of N I seventy-five. Combined that with our mutual aid responses, gives us a hundred. And our priority response to thirty-one or two calls for medical emergencies was seven point six minutes, twenty-seven of those calls. Any questions on that? Funds? Just an update on the Slocken grant that we were awarded, the five hundred dollars. We was just contacted last week by them that they're in the process of reviewing ours. The final reviewer, they had to make sure, you know, everything, saw the teeth are crossed and eyes are dotted, so...
It was five hundred to five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
You left that per...
Or did I say five hundred? Five hundred thousand, sorry. They told us that we could expect to hear release of the funds or award, official award of the funds at the, either late July, early August. So...
This is what's going towards the ambulance.
This is what's going towards the ambulance.
And wild fire truck or whatever.
Uh, well, yes.
Rush, right? I knew it was a different name, but...
Same thing.
Also, I copied all the board members on it, and we was talking about it for those township meeting as well. I did draft a letter to the residents discussing some points of the village that's coming up. I thought it was important to get out there to everybody that, A, this isn't a full three and a half mils increase, that this is a expired village, that we're doing two point oh of that. Basically, the increase is actually one and a half. I hit on some language that was in there about a portion of the money going to NACPA and explaining it that because the village offsets the budget in the first three years, based for the last three years, because it's free form. Kind of went over a history of how long we've been on the, well, expired village that we were on, that's been running for fourteen years without any incremental increase, which is why it's kind of a hefty. One point five mils is kind of a hefty increase all at once, but it is needed, so... I just, I wanted to, again, get something out to our residents to try to explain some of this because the verbiage on the ballot itself is kind of confusing. And Chief Wylie, still there? You want to just let them know about the two ambulances that we do have on order going to that where they sit?
Absolutely. So, the two ambulances are manufactured, and they are sitting in Holland, Michigan at E V Plus. It's the first stop. I took a trip down to Florida, did the final inspection, there were some rework that needed done, as I expected. Anytime you buy a custom piece of equipment like this, there's just something. Paint or just something gets through quality control that probably shouldn't have. That's all been addressed. The trucks are, as I said, in Holland at E V Plus. They have, we put aftermarket bumpers on the front, the deer killers. It's cheaper to put that on than it is to take a six thousand dollar deer hit, which we've already had one truck with three hits. So, just saying, those are on now. The new radios are installed, the power cots, so that push the button up and down. They're sitting there in Holland, however, the holdup at this point is the loading feature or the locking mechanism for the cot. Those have been pushed out to at least August before we can get them. Once that's complete, we'll bring them back here, and we have to do our decals and stock them, and then get them inspected by the state, and hopefully that doesn't take very long. Because our other two trucks are, let's just say, hope is not a great plan. And that's the plan that we're operating on at this point with these other two ambulances that these are replacing. As a matter of fact, if I may, one of our other trucks is over at Ford dealer right now, waiting on a part so that we can have air conditioning, because this is not the time of year to not have air conditioning. So, but that's where those sit. So, right now, we're right around five hundred thousand for both of them. I think it's two forty-eight and some changes where we still have to pay the vendor that did the radio install, I'm not quite sure where that's going to come in, but we're going to be right at the bumper on the five hundred thousand. Now, I was able to negotiate them taking the old units in trade, thank you, so we don't have to deal with that. And there was enough value there that we were able to purchase a couple pieces of equipment that I was highly encouraged by our department members to get. So, that's where that's at.
Then go on the two ambulances.
They go on the two ambulances, yes, they're stair chairs. So, we were able to make that happen as well. So, when this is all said and done, I think this is the first time in the history of the department that we will have two turnkey pieces of equipment brought here to this department to use. So, this is a huge deal, and you know, your support in all of this has been just fantastic, and we, I can't say thank you enough, and I don't think my teammates can say thank you enough either, so this is awesome. Okay?
Could you have anything else?
So, we got the tank, both tankers back, they're in service. Our engine that was, that suffered damage at the fire in the village that is still out. It just so happens the repair facility for that engine and where the ambulances are is about twenty minutes apart. So, last week, I took a trip over to Holland, shot up to Allendale, physically inspected the truck, looked at the process of the work, looked at the parts and was just, I mean, it got hurt bad. So, they're still in process of that repair. I tried to get a status update today, knowing the meeting was tonight. However, I was not able to make contact with anybody, and we had runs this morning, and it's just, it was Monday, coming back from vacation, it couldn't have been any other Monday than a Monday. So, but that's where that sits as well, okay? So, I think we're getting better, getting more healthy.
I did file an insurance claim with our insurance company for the work that's needed to request to open in June one, so. Andy Ray called me today, asked me a few questions, and July puts in process.
That was one of my questions I was going to ask. Village Holly isn't stepping up the plate?
No. They've asked us to go through our own insurance. Which we will, and it looks like our insurance will subrogate to their insurance. So, they're going to be the ones that can beat it back and forth.
Is there a deductible for our side?
Five hundred dollars.
That completes my... All right, thank you. Very proud of your association.
Association on anything group focus.
All right, thank you. Holly Township, I don't know if I announced this, that we did get from the Oak County Board of Commissioners. We received ten million dollars to purchase capacity from Genesee County for the sewer project coming down Dixie Highway, which will serve Dixie Highway, Grovewood, Brandon Township, and the village at Workville. That was a major hurdle in pushing that project further. That's a project that's been on the books since nineteen fifty-eight. And due to a lack of funding, it's never been moved forward. And we've done some creative things which helped to bring those other communities on board. Typically, when a sewer comes through, everybody's made to sign on. And in this particular case, we're leaving some of the homeowners along that corridor that have been there for many, many years. They won't have to sign on until either their current field fails or transfer into property ownership. And that's one of the things that makes it more palatable for the community. And then we've got some outside funding with commitment from property owners that have intention of developing going forward. And that's helped to stabilize some of the financial, because we work forward. So, we've worked hard on that, and that was a big success. And I got to give credit to Alyssa Slocken. I called her and asked her to intervene, and she helped us get it across the finish. Without her, it would not have gotten ducked. So, I do want to be publicly thanking her. Holly Township has several developments coming in front of the planning commission over the next few months with the potential of somewhere upwards to a thousand new units in the township. So, that's some progress, even in this economy. Houses are hitting the market in Holly, and they're sold the same week, if they're priced within, you know, reason. So, there's a need and a desire for housing in Holly. Karen, did you have anything to add?
No.
All right, we'll go to Rose Township.
Due to the, you know, I was talking, heard people have requests, I went to the postcard today, released it today, and it was to vote for the village, and it's a postcard that one explains how much village increase it is because people were saying wrong, it's about one point four mils. Number two is, the question is, how much is it going to cost me? I gave an example of how much it's going to cost based on a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand dollars. And then number three is what the money was going to be used for, regardless, the money is going to be used for a hundred percent to fire and EMS. And I also put my name as treasurer, I gave my email and my telephone number. So, if anybody wants to know what's it going to cost me specifically at my house, I can go ahead and compute that if someone is that interested. So, between those, that's going to go out this week, I've given the go-ahead on, and we're going to send it, I'm going to send it to all the registered voters of Rose Township. And I told that they should get it somewhere. Ideally, I'd like to get it early next week, I don't want to get too close to the election because I'll get lost with all the other mailings and what have you. So, I'm trying to set up, we'll see how it goes. So, we'll go, the people will be getting it either Saturday or Monday or Tuesday at the latest. And my printer assures me that will be it, and they said it looks good, so we shall see. So, watch out for Rose Township people.
And what's possible?
Yeah, we do, because what we do, otherwise it would cost a fortune. So, what we do is resident, if there's four or five people there, and we just put it to the residents of Rose Township or... So, but if anybody has any questions, and they say, gee, how much is it going to cost me? I says, I can compute it, I've been doing this for forty-five years, I can, I'm good with the numbers.
Well, it's also important to factor in that without the quality service, level of service at the ISO rating, and how that factors in, and how that saves approximately twenty percent to the homeowner, owner insurance and...
Well, the thing is, is, I mean, regardless of what you think, we have to have, we have to have a fire requirement, we have to have EMS. We don't have any...
I agree with you, it's just a talking point, if people are kind of negative towards it, that, well, we also know...
It's a four by six cars, though it was limited.
No, I'm just saying if you get questions that are fielded from your postcards.
Yes, and I, so I, so we shall see how it goes in. But I would hope that it is at least informative to the average person who maybe just, it's a very long nasty sentence on that ballot, all of my C line entries, so this is, I'm trying to keep it short and sweet and telling the people what they want to know.
And the sooner you get it out, the better, because absentee ballots are already being...
Well, they've been since June, I think, so, I mean, to the extent that, yes, I... Point was taken, I had to go ahead, so I decided to leave it the week before the election.
Anything else? Mr. Noble?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Mr. Citizen at large?
Mr. Citizen, I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Then we will enter into our last public comment from the general public. Anyone interested in public comment? You're all quiet.
Did a good job.
Yes, all right.
I'll do one.
Come on up to the podium. Give your name and address.
Denise Musseris, twenty-one fifty Ranch Road. I just want to thank the department for coming over to our house this morning. They did a very nice job.
All is well, I hope.
Smoke detectors going up there. Yes. I will officially adjourn meeting at two twenty-five.